The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Present.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Present.
Alderman Cone. Alderman Ryan. Alderman Varmer.
Present.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Present.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Browning.
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Here.
Alderwoman Keys.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldrick.
Present.
President Green.
Present.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Alderman Ryan. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Tyus.
Present.
We have thirteen present. We have Coram. I'm sorry, President Green, you were muted.
Oh, sorry about that. Coram being present, we will be led in opening a reflection by Katie Rhodes, the founder and executive director of Healing Action. Katie?
Yes, hi, how are you? Thank you for having me. Let's see. So as we take a moment to reflect today, I want to bring our attention to a crime that we don't like to think happens here, but deeply impacts our community in St. Louis and across the Midwest. It's human trafficking. January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month. A time to recognize not just the survivors and the services that support them, but also the systems and actions that allow trafficking to persist. At Healing Action Network, we work daily with survivors of trafficking and exploitation. Their stories are heartbreaking, not only because of what they've endured, but also because of how many people look the other way or stayed silent to protect abusers. Human trafficking does not thrive in isolation. It exists because of demand. People who exploit others' vulnerability for profit or personal gain. And it's sustained by the silence of those who see something but choose not to speak up. Whether out of fear or discomfort or indifference, this silence makes us complicit. It lets abusers operate in the shadows and allows buyers to believe that there are no consequences for their actions. We are reminded of high-profile cases where silence enabled prolonged abuse. Individuals like Harvey Weinstein and Sean Combs were able to perpetuate harm over decades, shielded by the inaction of those around them. Such examples underscore the critical importance of speaking out against exploitation and supporting survivors. This issue is not just a global issue. It happens here in our neighborhoods and our communities. Vulnerable people are coerced into exploitation right here in St. Louis. What about the strip club owners who exploit vulnerable women? Or the businesses that hold meetings at strip clubs? Or that the number one perpetrator of child exploitation is somebody in their families? These crimes often go unnoticed because they don't fit our assumptions or because it is easier not to look too closely. As we pause for a moment before we move on to our days of business, I encourage each of us to reflect on how we can break the silence, how we can create a community where exploitation is no longer acceptable and where survivors are supported, heard, and empowered. May we find the courage to speak up, to educate ourselves and others, and to take proactive steps to end the system that allows abuse. By refusing to be passive bystanders, we create a community where exploitation is confronted and human dignity is upheld. Thank you for allowing me to share with you guys today.
Thank you, Katie. With that, we will dispense with line item four. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, oh. Alderman from the third.
Hey, Madam President, thank you. I know we're virtual this morning, so probably don't have a lot of honored guests, but I would like to have just an acknowledgement and honored guests, all of the city employees that have been working so diligently the last week on snow removal and, you know, helping with, you know, setting up warming shelters and just trying to respond to the winter weather that we've been having this past week. And so I'd like to have those city employees as our honored guests this morning.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board, that was going to be my honored guest. And I want people to know that they are out there, they are working hard. I have fielded so many questions about why we don't clean side streets. We've addressed that issue in the thirty years that I've been here. We don't clean them because yours parked on those streets. And if we clean them, we will bury your cars. And on the roads that we have cleaned streets, we have buried cars and people are upset. So the workers are out there doing the best we can, but until we get a policy of how we can clean side streets, please know nobody is getting cleaned in South St. Louis or the Central Quarter or some other place. The people are doing the best they can and they are doing a great job with the employees that we have. And I especially want to say that to the people out there on the snow plows and cleaning the streets. I know everybody else has worked hard, but you're out there in that weather. And I've settled streets for a number of years and I really do appreciate the job you do and everybody else. But a shout out to the people who are driving the plows and things because they are working twelve-hour shifts, going home, sleeping a few hours and getting back up. Some people are working overtime and that's a very hard job to do. So thank you for all city workers, but especially to the people who work for those plows and cleaning the streets up. And they are my special guests, I'm sorry.
Okay, Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Today I would like to have as my honored guest, Michael Doffin, who is a constituent of mine from the first ward. He's been our assessor for the city for, I think, gosh, is it five years, six years now? And will be moving on and taking a spot as a judge, which is just an incredible achievement for someone as well. So I wanted to say one, thank you to him for his service. I know he always returns all of our calls, the calls of our constituents more importantly. And he's going to be a great judge and so it's going to be exciting to see what he does next. And just wanted to have him as my honored guest today. Congratulations, Mike.
Thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Also echo the Alderwoman from the first, Dito Mike, congratulations to him. And also echo the comments from the Alderwoman from the twelfth and third in giving our city employees a shout out. I also want to thank and have as my honor guest, all the unhoused providers who have been working also around the clock. And organizations that have been making sure that our unhoused have stayed warm. Peter and Paul has opened up an emergency shelter in the S- in the Soulard area. And also State Representative Kim Collins that opened up her emergency shelter. So just thank you to all the individuals that are making sure in these inclement time, inclement weather, as temperature continue to get colder and colder and more snow, that all the providers that are making sure our unhoused community has a warm cot and some food and just warm shelter. So thank you to all our unhoused providers.
Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President. Hate to be redundant, but all of my thank yous have been given out as well. So definitely want to thank all the city workers who are working really hard. I know I've been told that Streets Department staff is working twelve-hour shifts and it's been, it's pretty cold out there. So I want to thank them. Definitely want to thank all of the unhoused providers. Also want to thank all of the volunteers in our city who are taking their time right now to stand up these emergency operations so that people don't pass away in the cold. Want to thank Andre Cole, who is helping to operate a warming bus. I think one of the only ones in the city. Definitely want to give a shout out to Bethany Williams, who's, you know, I've seen the Streets Department out working. I've seen them doing what they can to respond to issues. I've received proactive outreach from them. So just want to thank everyone who's doing what we can to meet our winter needs when this hazardous weather happens.
A further introduction of honored guests. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Sorry, Madam President, members of the board. I forgot one honored guest. Let me make sure my camera's on. I forgot one honor guest. Also, I want to have as my honor guest the new sheriff of the city of St. Louis, Alfred Montgomery, who's also, you know, the sheriff offices, just making sure they wash their courts. But also during this time, he has used sheriff vans and resources to transport unhoused individuals to shelters. So as my honor guest, I also like to have my newly elected sheriff, Alfred Montgomery.
Need further introduction of honored guests. Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Don't move.
Uh, we need a second.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh. That we approve the minutes from Friday, December thirteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B of the agenda and has been placed in a Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for the appointment to the Grove Community Improvement District, Donald Bellin. I respectfully request, go ahead.
No, go ahead. I thought you were done.
I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones.
Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Grove Community Improvement District.
Thank you. I would move that we accept the mayor's appointment of Donald Bellin to the Grove Community Improvement District.
Then moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointment to the Grove Community Improvement District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Holly Hills Special Business District. The appointment of Brett Reinert. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment sincerely to Shara O. Jones.
Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Holly Hills Special Business District.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to accept the mayor's appointment of Brett Reinert to the Holly Hills Special Business District.
Lots of seconds there. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first. I think the one I heard the loudest was the Alderman from the third. So that we approve the, um, the mayor's appointment to the Holly Hills Special Business District. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Uh, we can dispense with line items eight through eleven. Alderman from the fourteenth, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill one seventy-two.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules and introduce Board Bill one seventy-two.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourteenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill one seventy-two. This is a non-deviable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer. Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrick.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer.
Aye.
Aye.
We have fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the fourteenth. If you could please place Board Bill one seventy-two at the end of the first reading of board bills.
Noted.
First reading of board bills.
First reading of board bills, Board Bill number one fifty-six introduced by Alderman Aldrick, an ordinance providing for the unconditional vacation and abolition of a public right of way in a portion east-west alley in City Block nine seven four as bounded by Sheridan Street, Elliott Avenue vacated, Thomas Street, and Lefingwell Avenue and said alley beginning two-one-two-point-two-one feet east of Lefingwell Avenue and continuing to a point previously vacated by ordinance six-one-seven-nine-two in the city of St. Louis, Missouri and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number one fifty-seven introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance recommended by Planning Commission and approving an amended community unit plan for an area located in the city of St. Louis and comprising a portion of the Washington University Danforth Campus, pledging cooperation of the Board of Aldermen and requesting various officials, departments, boards, and agencies of the city to cooperate and to exercise their respective powers in a manner consistent with the amended community unit plan, authorizing the directing, the taking of other actions and approval, and execution of other documents as necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the extent hereof in amended community unit plan. Board Bill number one fifty-eight introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance approving removal of a certain parcel of real property from the boundaries of the Corandelet Commons Community Improvements District as provided for in section sixty-seven-point-one-four-four-one-point-one RSMO. Board Bill number one fifty-nine introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city of St. Louis, Missouri and Corandelet Broadway Tiff. Board Bill number one sixty introduced by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance pertaining to the Health Insurance Portability and Accountability Act of nineteen ninety-six as amended in regulations promulgated through their under HIPAA, amending ordinance number six-eight-one-zero-nine, Attachment A as amended by ordinance number seven-one-one-zero-two, and Attachment B by designating a privacy officer and security officer for the Department of Health of the city of St. Louis. Board Bill number one sixty-one introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment authorizing the city of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds and Hyzer Bus LLC project series twenty-twenty-five in a principal amount of not to exceed forty-one million. First, Board Bill number one sixty-two introduced by Alderwoman Velazquez in ordinance to change Article seven, Section one, Article eight, Section one, Article eight, Section one, and Article the twenty-one of the Charter of the City of St. Louis in Section five-one-fourteen-point-zero-eight-zero through five-one-fourteen-point-one-twenty of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis to create a development of city administration to be directed and overseen by a, by a city administrator who shall be the chief administrative officer of the city responsible for the administration of the city's affair placed under the authority and management of the Department of City Administration and city administrator except as otherwise specifically provided in the Charter of the City of St. Louis and revised code ordinances and subject to the provisions of this ordinance and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number one sixty-three introduced by Alderman Browning, an ordinance pertaining to the filing fee of the city elected offices including mayor, comptroller, president of the Board of Aldermen, and Alderman containing definitions and a servability clause. Board Bill number one sixty-four introduced by Alderman Browning, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install humps to calm the flow of traffic on various blocks in the ninth ward. Board Bill number one sixty-five introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress except as noted under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill number one sixty-six introduced by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance establishing an earnings and payroll tax reimbursement account in support of the project described herein, approving a development and performance agreement related to such project and authorizing execution thereof and authorizing certain other actions by city officials. Board Bill number one sixty-seven introduced by Alderman Board, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment authorizing the Department of Health to accept a local public health agency accreditation assistance grant award of up to two-hundred-and-thirty-nine-million-eight-hundred-and-ninety-thousand from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one sixty-eight introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance appealing, I'm sorry, repealing ordinance number six-five-two-eight-zero, ordinance number six-five-three-six-one, which was in part ratified in ordinance number six-five-four-two-three, Section five oh one, and ordinance number six-six-nine-seven-zero respectively dissolving the special allocation funds from three-eight-hundred block Park Avenue and Bravoy's Plaza and six-one-seven-five-through-eight-one Dalemore redevelopment areas and respectfully terminating the designation of certain portions of the city of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment areas authorizing certain actions relating thereto and containing a servability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill number one sixty-nine introduced by Alderman Browning, an ordinance pertaining to administrative fines and effective code enforcement for vacant and deteriorated property containing definitions and a servability clause. Board Bill number one seventy introduced by Alderwoman Velazquez, an ordinance pertaining to fines and code enforcement for vacant and deteriorated property, including increased fines for unsecured buildings and unlawful demolitions, directing monies from those, from these fines to the city's existing vacant building initiative fund and expanding the use of this fund containing a servability clause. Board Bill number one seventy-one introduced by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance to reconcile collection methods with state statute by modifying existing ordinances to more effectively and timely recover amounts owed to the city for fines and improvement costs as special tax bills containing an effective date and servability clause. Board Bill number one seventy-two introduced by Alderman Aldrick, an ordinance approving a redevelopment plan dated August twenty-seven, twenty twenty-four for the one-one-twenty-eight Washington Avenue areas in the city of St. Louis. That is the extent of the first reading of board bills.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I'd just like to be add as a co-sponsor of Board Bill one sixty-six.
Madam Clerk, you could please make note of that. And also send one seventy-two to the HUDs Committee.
Noted.
A reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills to the public infrastructure and utilities, Board Bill number one fifty-six and one sixty-four, to the HUDs, Board Bill one fifty-seven, one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, one sixty-one, one sixty-five, one sixty-six, one sixty-eight, and one seventy-two. To Health and Human Development, Board Bill one sixty and one sixty-seven. To Legislation and Rules, Board Bill number one sixty-two, one sixty-three. To Public Safety, Board Bill one sixty-nine, one seventy, and one seventy-one.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
Second reading, report of standing committees. The following board bills were reported out of public infrastructure and utility with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill number one forty-four introduced by Alderwoman Keys, Switzer, Browning, Varmer, and Velazquez, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller of the city of St. Louis on behalf of the city to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the Missouri Department of Transportation for the receipt of MODOT Highway Safety Grant Funding appropriating the sum of eighty thousand dollars containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number one forty-seven introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, amending ordinance number seven-one-nine-zero-two to strike off the street name Virginia Avenue and in lieu of therefore, I'm sorry, in lieu of replace it with the street name Vermont Avenue. Board Bill number one forty-seven introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance establishing various top sites at the intersection of Boeing Street and Livingston Drive in the first ward regulating all traffic traveling on streets meeting at such intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number one forty-nine introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance establishing a two-way stop site at the intersection of Holdamont Avenue and Holdamont Tracks, regulating all traffic traveling north and southbound on Holdamont Avenue at the intersection of Holdamont Avenue in the Holdamont Tracks and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill number one fifty-one, committee substitute introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, pursuant to ordinance number seven-zero-three-three as amended by ordinance number seven-one-three-nine-four, and ordinance directing the director of streets to install the humps to calm the flow of traffic on Livingston Drive in the first ward. Out of Transportation and Commerce, Board Bill number one forty-two introduced by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, Board, Public Estimate and Apportionment Authorizing and Directing the Director of Airports, President of the Board of Public Service, and the Comptroller of the City of St. Louis Owner and Operator of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport to enter into and execute on behalf of the city the amended and restated memorandum and agreement between Southwest Airlines Company and the City of St. Louis, Missouri, which is attached hereto as Attachment one and made a part hereof. That is the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item fifteen. We'll vote for perfection consent.
Board Bill number one forty-one introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, President Green, Alderman Cone, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderman Aldrick, an ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and apportionment authorizing and directing the mayor and comptroller of the city of St. Louis on behalf of the city to enter into and execute an agreement or agreements with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control being offered pursuant to a federal fiscal year twenty twenty-four, Notice of Funding Availability, the NOFA, for the Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration Grant Program and directing the comptroller to issue warrants thereon upon the city treasury and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill number one twenty-eight as amended, as amended introduced by Alderman Ryan, President Green, Alderman Cone, and Alderman Browning, an ordinance amending Chapter three-point-nine-nine of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis to clarify the applicability of living wage requirements.
Alderman from the fourth, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill one twenty-eight as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill number one twenty-eight as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we perfect Board Bill number one twenty-eight as amended. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. This is a, a very simple change to a definition to make sure that there's not the misclassification of employees. We, we were hearing from some entities that people were being classified as interns to get around this previous legislation, although they were actually doing the work of employees. So this just closes that loophole and ensures that the spirit of the legislation is followed. And I will be happy to take any questions from anyone.
Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam.
Madam, um, President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the fourth would yield.
The Alderman from the fourth yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um, Alderman, so I was trying to figure out, I've kind of heard where you say it, that it was to get around so that they wouldn't uh, so the employees wouldn't be classifying people as interns because that was the only exception in the bill in which they didn't have to pay the wages. Is that correct?
It was what we were seeing, uh, what we heard from in committee from, uh, SIEU was that the, um, there was essentially a, a category of, of employees that was just made up wholesale after this where people were calling them trainees. And, and then not paying them, uh, the living wage. And so this just says, hey, unless uh, cause that trainee, I guess you could, you could make the argument that that trainee is an intern. So this just clearly defines intern.
Can't hear.
I'm sorry, you, you couldn't hear me?
The sound went way down.
Okay, um.
Thank you.
Uh, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, um, so yeah, what we were hearing in committee from, uh, SIEU was um, that there was a, a category of employee that was kind of made up wholesale after this uh, legislation was passed called a trainee. And people were paying those, they were calling those trainees interns even though they were employees getting trained on how to do the job, uh, and they were not paying them the living wage. So this is just something that when we saw an issue, we just are, are coming back to the well to, uh, to make sure that the spirit of this legislation has followed.
Okay, so I guess I'm reading, so as I read this or as I read that, and when I'm looking at page one of two um, line, um, eighteen, eighteen through twenty says the wage and benefit requirements of this chapter shall apply to any employee of a contractor for all hours that the employee is employed and performing work related to the covered contract or concession agreement but shall include hours employed performing general overhead or, or administrative services related to the city contract only when such hours total at least, at least ten hours for, for the employee in a given week and can clearly be identified allocated as a, as the, what is the term that you use, uh, as that of s- city contracts. So I guess I was reading that is that if they did under, um, ten hours, then they would not qualify for being, uh, um, given the minimum, the benefits and requirements. So I, I guess I'm missing something here. I, that but kind of threw me off.
I can't speak to that as much, uh, because that is, that was existing language in this, that, that's not my language. I, I believe that would have been, I, I, I want to say Sarah Martin's language. Um, but that, that's been the existing, uh, language that really the only change that we have here is on page two from line six to nine.
Okay.
It's, it's, that's the only thing that I have changed in, in this bill.
Okay, but I thought since she was keep carrying the bill, because I'm trying to, trying to understand that what the but is, is like, okay, so if you do nine and a half hours, you won't qualify for the benefit pay because your hours are, uh, something different. So I'm just, and I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure we're not leaving somebody out. They shouldn't get paid what they should get paid. And I understand you're saying you're only changing that. But at some point I would like to have a conversation with you because it seems like we're kind of still leaving a loophole for some people who are not getting paid. Okay?
I'd be more than happy to address that. Yeah, I, it, it does seem like this legislation was not tailored towards people who are working less than ten hours a week. I, I agree with you there. Um, but that's kind of the, the, uh, the, the jumping off point that we were starting from, uh, and the, the hope was to cure this, this much larger loophole that we're seeing people who are working forty hours a week, uh, full-time and, uh, and, and not being paid the living wage.
So who would be, and I guess my question is who would be working less than ten hours a week except for an intern? Okay, so I don't know, maybe that was her reinforcement of that interns don't qualify for this. So maybe that's where it goes to. But it's kind of, right. Okay, thank you. No further questions.
Thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Noted.
Uh, Alderman from the fourteenth.
I'd like to be as a co-sponsor, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the seventh.
I would also like to be added as co-sponsor.
Alderwoman from the first, is that what you're also asking for?
Yes, thank you, Madam President.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
Noted.
Any further discussion, any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the fourth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first that we perfect Board Bill number one twenty-eight as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Report of engrossment.
Report of engrossment, Board Bill number one thirty-two, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven as amended floor. Um, Board Bill number one thirty-nine and one forty.
Third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent.
Board Bill number one thirty-two, Board Bill number one thirty-six, Board Bill number one thirty-seven as amended floor, Board Bill number one thirty-nine.
Madam Clerk, I think that only one thirty-two and one thirty-six are on consent.
Um, yes, yes, correct. I'm sorry. Board Bill number one thirty-two and Board Bill one thirty-six. I'm sorry.
Uh, Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of the board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading and final passage of Board Bill's consent count.
Second.
Second.
Then moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first that we third read and finally pass board bills on the consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please, uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Swicer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenberry.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Norrion.
Aye.
Alderman Varmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Valesquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Brownie.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Audrick.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
We have fifteen ayes votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill number one thirty-seven as amended floor introduced by Alderwoman Valesquez, President Green, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance establishing a municipal identification card program Gateway Card in the City of Saint Louis to provide all residents access to a recognized form of government issued photo identification.
Alderwoman from the sixth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill one thirty-seven as amended on the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to, uh, adopt.
Third reading.
Pass, uh, Board Bill one thirty-seven.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty-seven as amended on the floor. Uh, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. I, uh, uh, just want to go over some things. I know we had a robust discussion on this uh, bill last time before we broke, uh, for winter or before we took a break for, uh, the holidays. Um, since then, we've had some updates. Um, in particular, I just want to point out that the Post Dispatch wrote a story about, uh, Saint Xavier College Church, which is a church that has been committed to, uh, trying to help people get IDs for nearly thirty years. And the program like this would help people like Tanya Hulse, who was quoted in the story that she had seven dollars to her name and the one thing that was stopping her uh, from cashing a check was that she needed an ID. So, uh, Board Bill one thirty-seven would help people like Ms. Hulse, um, be able to get the idea IDs they need. So I'm going to just, uh, do a quick update of what the ID does and what it does not because there's been some misinformation. Uh, what it can do is help people get a job. It qualifies as, uh, identification for an I-nine. Uh, it's accepted at the Saint Louis Housing Authority, cashing a check, renting an apartment. Of course, uh, all City of Saint Louis agencies will honor it. There's been some misinformation about it, uh, being a, an ID that can allow non-citizens to vote. That is, uh, emphatically not true. Please look at section two. Uh, the ID does not allow anybody to vote, nor does it, uh, not, nor does it allow you to buy age-restricted products such as, uh, uh, alcohol, cannabis, anything that's age-restricted by the state. Um, we have had some really great updates. I know one of the conversations that we had, we talked about uh, last, uh, on the floor last, last month was what can it really be used for and how and how, how can it be used and will it be useful? And so I emailed, uh, all of you should have received an email from me. At some point yesterday, we got, we received news about some exciting partnerships. Uh, Saint Louis Community Credit Union has agreed, um, and there's a note on letterhead that, uh, they will be a partner and they will accept this the Gateway Card as a, an ID to open up a bank account and provide, uh, financial services. They, uh, we also received some partnership, uh, notes from, uh, or some, some partnerships from other organizations including HomeScreen, which is the city's, uh, largest, uh, screening agent for, uh, private landlords. And they said emphatically that it would, they would accept it and only that they would accept it particularly for their Arch by HomeScreen program, which, um, really helps people who are at risk, uh, for homelessness find, uh, places to live that would help them because one of the barriers that they see is, uh, frankly, uh, people without an ID. Another, uh, partner that signed on was Isaiah Fifty-Eight, which is a food pantry that serves multiple zip codes, including the Sixth Ward. Uh, they do require a photo ID to get, um, to, for their clients. They served over thirteen thousand people last year. And one of the things that they see again, and it's in your, uh, inbox with, uh, in their words, um, but they see people who, uh, don't always, aren't able to always to keep their IDs and then they can't get the services, services being food and clothing um, that they need. So, uh, we've established some partnerships and businesses have even agreed at this point to sign on for, uh, perks discounts, uh, including STL Style, Mocha Bees, Milk Toast, Flowers and Weeds, which is a flower shop off of Cherokee Street. Um, and so with that, um, I yield for any questions.
Need further discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President and members of, uh, the board. I do want to commend the, uh, Alderwomen and all the advocates who have been working on this legislation. Uh, I do think this is something that can be beneficial to individuals that are either unhoused that can't get an ID, um, and individuals that may not have access to funding to get an ID. I know, um, last week on, or not last week, that's how long it's been, last time the board Alderman met. Um, you know, I inquire of the Alderwoman from the Sixth Ward because I did have concerns and over break. Uh, I've spoken with the Alderwoman about those concerns and you know, I, I believe this is a, a good program. Um, I know originally we, the Alderwoman said this was going to be going through the Treasurer's Office and then it, it will be, but that the Treasurer Office will be paying for it, but uh, came to realize and understand actually this is coming out of general revenue. So uh, it's not coming from the Parking Division. It's coming from the Treasurer's Office, which general revenue would be coming from taxpayers. Over the next several years, uh, this program can, I mean, it's estimated, uh, to cost about two hundred some thousand, uh, and that will continue to increase over the next several years to potentially get up to eight hundred some thousand for this program, which again, I do believe is good, but uh, my concerns, I will be voting for it, but I also will be somebody who will be making sure that this program is successful. Uh, because I would hate for, we've, uh, established a lot of new programs in the City of Saint Louis, um, that's not always, uh, gone, uh, I think in a, a way that taxpayers or people in the City of Saint Louis can believe that those programs can be successful. We've passed legislation at this board and seen how some of those programs have, uh, still have some hiccups and uh, my biggest concern is to make sure that if we're going to be investing, uh, uh, this amount of funds into this program and using taxpayer dollars that ultimately that these IDs actually can be used for some of these partnerships, uh, that you talk about Alderwoman from the Sixth Ward. Uh, as I talk to you, like, how can this ID actually be used for, you know, um, partnerships with banks? How can this ID be used for, um, used at like the library? And I know some of those questions are still pending, um, because it depends on the minister, which will be the Treasurer's Office to ensure that this program is actually being administered for some of those partnerships. But I would hope if we are going to be investing, um, and adding new money to the Treasurer's Office that, uh, these IDs actually be something that is beneficial. So I will support the bill today. Um, but I do think there are still some outstanding questions and I think some of those questions can't be answered because we have to see how the program is ran. Um, but I will be, uh, wanting to support this program, uh, as it's moving forward, but also be very uh, as an eye hawk to make sure that we're not wasting, uh, funds on ID that won't be actually used, um, to benefit individuals who are getting this ID.
Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, I am confused about where the funds are coming from for the program. Um, if there could be a moment of clarification, it was my understanding because I, I want to commend the Alderman, uh, from the sixth from bringing this, uh, issue forward. First and foremost, I do think it's an important issue. And I also want to commend the Alderman from the fourteenth for bringing these fiscal concerns because they are concerns I share as well. Um, you know, we've seen a lot of issues, uh, that when the city administers things, it's not always optimal. And so, um, I just want to make sure as well, especially for approaching a million dollar program a year, um, that we, you know, recognizing that our income as a city is not increasing at the cost of doing business, um, that um, if, if we're going to have to make cuts to another department, we're, we're very clear on where the funds are coming from. So if I could inquire of the Alderwoman from the sixth to clarify exactly where the funds are coming from. Um, I think, uh, the Alderman from the fourteenth brought up an excellent point I'd like to go into more detail about. Alder, if the Alderwoman.
From the sixth yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the eighth?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Um.
Woman, uh, sorry, Alderwoman, uh, from the eighth, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, Alderwoman, um, again, I want to commend you for bringing this issue forward. Could you, uh, tell us, uh, where the funds are coming from that would pay for the program?
So this bill, nothing has changed since we last voted and since we last spoke, Alderwoman, uh, from the eighth. So this bill will be requested as part of the Treasurer's annual budget from the Treasurer's general revenue. So it is coming from the, the Treasurer's budget, yes, which does come out of the Treasurer's requesting it from his budget. From his general opening budget, which is what it was, which is the same thing as it was last time. Now this bill is not an appropriations bill. There was some confusion before the vote last time that this bill is an appropriations bill. What this bill is, does, it's establishing a program.
So Treasurer's, the Treasurer's Office has my, is it, is it coming out of?
Can I just finish my train of thought, please? So, so this is not, so this bill does not actually appropriate any money. This bill establishes this program. There's a fiscal note, which is not a million dollars a year. This, the fiscal note is two hundred and seventy thousand dollars forecasted based on Kansas City's numbers of estimating at seventy-five hundred IDs a year. And that cost is mostly in salary. I think in our last discussion, Alderwoman Schweitzer calculated that's thirty-seven dollars an ID, which is mostly in salary. And then that cost lowers because there's some startup costs. And then the next part is this, this does not have to go through E and A, but the Treasurer will have to request it as part of his annual budget in fiscal year twenty-six.
Thank you, Alderwoman. So the way it was described to me initially, and the way I understood it, was the funds were coming out of the Treasurer's parking funds.
No, we never said that. I, I literally am looking at the conversation, like the, the language that I'm using. And it is, will be requested as part of the Treasurer's annual budget of general funds.
Okay, so the way it was understood by myself is that it was coming from the Treasurer's Fund. So what, but what I'm hearing is that the Treasurer will be requesting it of the general fund. So there, it is coming directly from the general fund, Alderwoman?
From his budget. So he's requesting out of his budget from the general, from his budget. So yes, I mean, his budget as relates to the general revenue fund of the city, but it's out of his budget.
Sure, but I guess the question isn't how does it get, what, what fund does it go to? But where do the funds originate? Is it from the city's general fund? Or is it from the Treasurer's standalone budget of the parking revenue?
It is not the parking revenue. It is from the Treasurer's general revenue fund. So it is not touching any of the parking enforcement budget, as I said last time. And I think we, we have spoken previously.
But Alderwoman, just for clarity here, when the Treasurer is asking for funds from, for his general fund, he's asking for general revenue, funds from the general revenue. So I want to be very clear that we are, i- if what you're, if, if it's not coming from the Treasurer's discretionary parking fund, it is coming from the city's general fund. And even though it would go from the general fund to the Treasurer's Fund, it would be general revenue. And so I think, I just, I want to be very clear, because that was, this was, this was not the way that it was understood by myself in the previous hearings. If it's, it was described to me that was not general revenue. But is general revenue, I think we just need to be very clear to voters that this is where the funds are coming from. If it's going from general funds to the Treasurer's Office, then, but it-
I appreciate that. I would say that if you look at the met, the, the language that we've corresponded, I, it has been the same language all along, which clearly says general revenue funds from the Treasurer's Office. But yes, for clarity, that is what we're having in this moment.
Okay, so it would be general revenue fund. So, but I just want to be clear that there would that the funds would originate from the general fund. So I, I disagree. I think it's a very important issue. And I think when we have these discussions, it's, we need to be very clear about where the funds are coming from, because the city is entering with massive population loss, just a period of time where we're going to have to make some very tough decisions about what to fund and what not to fund as we move forward here. Because we, we clearly don't have the revenue streams that we need to be operating at full, at full capacity. And so it's just very, very important, even though the, the funds in your bill would go from the general fund to the Treasurer's Office, they would originate in the general fund. And I think it's, it's important that we're clear here. I appreciate the opportunity to clarify that. That was not my understanding going into the last vote. And I appreciate the Alderman from the Fourteenth bringing this clarification to us. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would also encourage you to look at some of the, the messages that we've said, that we've gone back and forth on. I'd also say too, that this is an estimate. If you look at the fiscal note, I mean, it is up to the Treasurer's discretion. Some of those employees can be cross-trained. So it is up to him to, it is up to the Treasurer's Office. They could cut, they could reconfigure, they could make changes to the, the estimate of, of the cost of the, I mean, because the bulk of the cost is in salaries, so.
Alderwoman from the seventh?
Thank you, Madam President. With the Alderwoman from the Sixth yield to an inquiry?
The Alderwoman from the Sixth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Seventh? Alderwoman from the Seventh, you may proceed.
Thank you. Alderwoman, first, I just want to thank you for your work on the bill and on the legislation. I know I was one of the people on the floor with you last time that was helping to kind of, you know, talk to our colleagues and get this across. But I also asked for you to just go in, you know, get some clarification and get some partners. And I know at that time you shared that you were engaging in conversations, you were working on that. And as soon as you had some more solid confirmation, you would follow up. And I can see from your update today that you've done so. I wanted to thank you as well. I know I've kept you on the phone for over an hour and I've sent you various emails. You know, for me, I think this bill is incredibly important. You know, the International Institute is in the Seventh Ward, the Michael Project is in the Seventh Ward. You know, we have legislation that I never thought I would see at the state level where people are proposing to bring in bounty hunters. Obviously, we have an issue with unhoused. And so I think I'm, I'm very excited to see, you know, municipal ID that could help really a lot of vulnerable populations, whether that's immigrants, whether there's members of LGBTQ. Obviously, they've had ID changes at the state level that is literally trying to aim to strip away their right to identify for themselves. This gives an alternate to that. But I, you know, I think some of the questions we had last time, even some of the questions I filled in and wanted to be clear on have been about the uses. And for me, that's something that's certainly helped me to come around and be a full supporter. So I just wanted to ask you, could you talk about the ways that this ID could be used?
Sure, thank you, Alderwoman. So one of the, one of the things that can be used where people need, a lot of times when you fill out an application for a job, you need to have simply a government-issued photo ID. This is a government-issued photo ID. As we, as I alluded to in the Post Dispatch story, as many people read, a lot of times to cash a check, you need a government-issued photo ID. Even to apply for St. Louis for HUD housing or housing here in the city, one of the requirements is a government-issued photo ID. On an I-9 form, which is a federal verification form, you need a government-issued photo ID. So all these things qualify for that. As we kind of, we got into last time, or we discussed last time, depending on how the program is structured, you know, we've been looking for banking partners. We were able to secure a banking partner with St. Louis Community Credit Union that enthusiastically came on, but it took them some time to check with their compliance departments. We've got another private banking institution that is enthusiastic about the program. They want to be a partner. They just really need to, for, for banks in particular, because they are highly regulated. Knowing the full details of the program and the documentation is important in their process. So we didn't want to put them on the spot since we, we don't have all the details yet. But we've got, I can confidently say there is another private banking institution that is enthusiastic and knows the need for this product and wants to partner with the city along with one confirmed banking partner. Food pantries, didn't realize it till I started working on this project. You need what? You need a government-issued photo ID. Just to go to, just to, just to go to a food pantry. Applying for an apartment, I may have already said that, government-issued photo ID. So there are different, a lot of these things that many of us take for granted. Some people who don't have an ID are kind of in this limbo state of, again, I think I quoted, I quoted Common in Committee, how do I get ID? If I can't get a ID, if I had ID, I wouldn't need ID. But it's kind of this circular conversation of needing these documents, but not being able to get the documents to get the ID. And unfortunately, some people are caught in that, you know? And so they, they can't do these basic things. They have a job, but they can't finish the employment application because they don't have that government-issued photo ID.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's really important. And so I just want to put on the floor to my colleagues to encourage you all just to think about the uses of this ID. I know I named some of the, the groups that could be helpful. And I've had, like, I basically would get questions from organizations who could be, you know, we're curious about this ID. And we're like, what are the uses? And a lot of those organizations, and I know we're probably thinking of, it's not just LGBTQ. It's not just the immigrant population or international population. But I had conversations with folks at senior centers within the ward. I had conversations with organizations who really help folks in poverty. And some of the uses that Alderwoman Velazquez is mentioning are things that those residents do, you know, struggle with. I've, I've seen people get turned away at food pantries because they don't have an ID. I've seen people be ineligible for rental, for utility assistance or rental assistance. I've seen, you know, people get exploited when they need to cash their checks because they don't have certain IDs. So they have to go with more predatory financial places. So I just want to put on the floor to my colleagues that I think the Alderwoman has taken our questions from last time and taken some of our valid questions about partnerships, about relationships there and how it could go. And she's gotten some solid partnerships. And I do want to put to us that this could be of use to folks within the city. And I do think there is a need for this in the city, especially given our soon-to-be political climate. So I just want to put that on the floor and thank the Alderwomen again and ask Madam Clerk to please add me as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make out of that. Alderwoman from the First?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I had a lot of the same concerns about the budget and the cost of the program. That's where my questions came from during the last, the last meeting that we had on perfection is going through the cost and that, you know, the estimates in the fiscal note are really worst-case scenario, you know, cost of this project is as expensive as it could be. And just to note to Alderwoman from the Eighth's questions about the budget and how that will all work is that, you know, every year, there's a budget for the Parking Division bill that comes forward. We have the Treasurer's Budget, the Office of Financial Empowerment's Budget. And in those times, and in committee, you know, at the Board of V and A, as you all are putting, you know, as, as the administration puts together the budget, that's where it, you know, push comes to shove in terms of how much is this program going to cost? Who's going to pay for it? What things are, are not done? Because this is now part of their budget. And I think, you know, I certainly will be looking really closely at the budgets to see, you know, is this causing the Treasurer's Budget or the Office of Financial Empowerment's Budget to swell to a point that is not something that the city can afford to do? And I think at that point, we say this needs, this needs to be cut here, or this needs to be cut there. And I can't tell you right now what those things will be or what the decision will be. But at the end of the day, there is an appropriations process, which we'll be entering into in the next several months. And we'll have to be looking really closely at the things we fund and don't fund in the city. So, you know, when I thought about that and the, the chances we'll have to weigh in and participate in those conversations and, you know, the importance of that simultaneously with the importance of this legislation and being able to offer this identification to members, to residents of our city. You know, I, I always try to really listen to the people in my ward when I'm making a decision here at the Board of Aldermen. And I can tell you that I've gotten, you know, ten to one, maybe even fifteen to one, people reaching out in support of this legislation. People see the value that was explained in all of the ways that it can be used. And I appreciate the importance of considering the program, knowing that we'll be talking about how it gets funded and what is or is not happening as time goes on in the coming months. And so I, I just wanted to put that forward as we do talk about the very important piece of this, that is how it will get funded in the future. Thank you.
Alderman from the Fourteenth, did you put your hand down? Okay, Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I do believe the Alderman from the Second was before me, but okay, he went away all of a sudden. If the Alderwoman from the Sixth with yield, with yield to question?
The Alderwoman from the Sixth yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the Twelfth?
Yes, Madam President.
Alderwoman, proceed.
Thank you. So this card that would be issued, and I can't remember, will the people who receive the card pay for the card? Or is that going to be part of the cost for the program?
It's no cost to them. So it's a cost to the city, but it's no cost to them.
Okay, and so why is that? Because most governmental IDs, be it a driver's license, or be it a, yeah, it doesn't have to be a driver's license, it's a state ID or some whatever. You have to pay some cost to get that, because there is a cost associated with this. Why isn't that a cost to the person who would receive it? I could hear you talking about the benefits, but I don't understand why they wouldn't pay for it.
Because what we've seen and what advocates have said through their experience is that cost is a barrier, particularly for these, for these folks who just find themselves in this limbo state of needing an ID and not being able to participate in basic sort of community functions, like being able to get a job or cash a check because they don't have an ID. So removing the barrier of cost is a key component of making sure that it's accessible to everyone.
Thank you, have no further questions.
Alderman from the Second?
Thank you, Madam President. With the Alderwoman from the Sixth, please yield.
The Alderwoman from the Sixth yield to questioning from the Alderman from the Second?
Yes.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderwoman, I just want to make sure I understand the structure of this bill. So this puts forth and establishes an office, an operational entity that exists, but it is not funded in this bill. That would come through the budget process. And when the Treasurer brings forth his budget or that office's budget's recommendations, is that correct?
Correct, Alderman.
Okay, so is there any language that exists? And I apologize if it is, but is there any language that exists that the Treasurer doesn't see fit to, to incorporate this as part of his budget? That's his prerogative? Moreover, what happens if through the budget process, either E and A or the Board of Aldermen, that funding does not exist to fund the office?
Then it essentially, he would, you know, we'd have an unfunded program. But I mean, there is no, you know, there is no requirement, as I understand it, we checked with Director, Budget Director Payne in as far as like the structure of the bill and the way that he looked at it. It was not an appropriations bill. The bill was, is establishing a program. And then to fund the program, it would require to go through the budgeting process, which of course also means essentially that the Treasurer has discretion in ultimately how much the program costs, how he will, how, I mean, he or the office, right? We'll staff it, we'll configure it.
Interestingly, okay. Is there a reason that you didn't want to incorporate an appropriation portion of this? That, that ordinance by ordinance, it demands that it be, it be submitted in the budget process each, each cycle?
I think that there's some, I think that there's, there's room for flexibility in just the program design. And typically, what we looked at with both Kansas City and Chicago, their legislation was very much, I mean, it, it left a lot of the program details in the, in the hands of the administrator. Now, Kansas City's did have that initial appropriation of, it was about the same cost, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But there, of course, their government structured a little bit differently. And, but they only funded it for, you know, one year in there. But, you know, their process is different. But really, the idea is to leave, you know, the, the program administrator is going to have the, the best working knowledge of what work, of, of, of what really works for the city, right? So it might be a smaller program, it might be, it might be working with more community groups. You know, it might be public-private, you know, funding. You know, there's, there's a, there's a whole assortment of ways that the program could be administered. And I think that that's important because ultimately, especially working with populations that are hard to reach, doing what works best to actually do the work is what matters.
Appreciate that. I also appreciate the spirit of, of this legislation. I, I do think there are gaps that exist for many folks who don't have access to a, a government-issued ID that, that are unable to get access to the economy, to community services. So I do appreciate the spirit of the bill. Thank you, no further questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the Sixth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. With that, I renew my motion to third read and finally pass Board Bill 137 as amended on the floor.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the Sixth, seconded by the Alderman from the Fourteenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 137 as amended on the floor. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Stone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion? Alderman Varmer? Alderwoman Valeskans?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonnier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Varmer?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion for the Alderwoman from the Sixth, the third read and finally pass Board Bill 137 as amended on the floor.
Board number 139, introduced by Alderman Browning and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement, authorizing the city of St.
authorizing the city of St. Louis, Missouri to issue its taxable industrial development revenue bonds in the principal amount of not to exceed thirty six million for the purpose of providing funds to the pay cost of constructing an industrial development project in the city. Approving a plan for such project and authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute certain documents related thereto and take certain other actions as are necessary or desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof.
Alderman from the ninth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill one thirty nine.
Thank you. I had moved that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty nine.
Second.
Been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty nine. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Well, we discussed this when we, before we broke for the holidays. And it's good to see you all again, although sad I can't see you all in person. This Board Bill, one thirty nine, is paired with one forty, and both are aimed towards keeping a homegrown company, C two N Diagnostics here in St. Louis. As a reminder, C two N has created a blood test called Pre-Settivity A D. It measures the efficacy of drugs that halt the progression of Alzheimer's disease. This is an incredible advancement in science, and this company has a ton of promise and it is growing. And it needs lab space, advanced lab space to grow. This board bill helps build out that lab space by giving a sales tax exemption to construction materials, as well as providing a ten-year seventy percent abatement on personal property tax. Now, personal property tax is not real property tax. That is, like the tax you pay on your car. And for this piece of equipment, it is a piece of construction equipment that is going to be used to build out this lab space. So we're really excited about the possibility of bringing this company. It brings a hundred and seventy-two jobs. They pay between fifty-five thousand and a hundred and twenty-five thousand, all full-time, averaging ninety-two thousand dollars a year. It's transforming a building that is a former nonprofit building. So this actually does put it on the tax books and brings new taxes to our city. It will also allow the company to occupy seventy thousand square feet in that historic building, meaning that we can transition the rest of the building into two hundred and fifty additional jobs. So this is really just exciting for St. Louis. And I think it really puts St. Louis on the map in a good way. I'm happy to take any questions from my colleagues if they have any.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the ninth, you're recognized to close.
Okay, well, thank you all. I, I hope that everyone's questions were answered, and that's why there was no questions. We did try to get information to you out during the break, and I really appreciate the partners at Cortex for getting that information and making C two N available to all those if they had questions. So with that, I ask for your favorable consideration and renew my motion.
Been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the tenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty nine. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
No.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Varmer? Alderwoman Valescas?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard? Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Varma?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier?
No.
We have ten I-votes and four no-votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the ninth to third read and finally pass Board Bill one thirty nine. We're on Board Bill one forty now.
I'm sorry. I was drawing my count. Board Bill number one forty, introduced by Alderman Browning and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimate and Apportement and authorizing and directing the assurance and delivery of one or more series of tax increment revenue notes, including the R P A for tax increment revenue notes, St. Louis Innovation District R P A for project, the R P A for notes, and an aggregate principal amount not to exceed four million dollars plus cost of insurance, approving a third amendment to amended and restated redevelopment agreement, approving the ninth supplemental trust indenture in connection with the insurance of the R P A for notes, authorizing and directing the taking of other actions, and approval and execution of other documents as necessary are desirable to carry out and comply with the intent hereof authorizing certain actions by certain officials of the city and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the ninth, you're recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill one forty.
Thank you. I move that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one forty.
Again, again.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one forty. Alderman, you may proceed.
So Board Bill one forty is the other part of this. It is issuing the TIF note for the section of Cortex's area that is called R P A four. That's the site of the former Goodwill Building. Again, this is not a new TIF. This was actually approved back in January of twenty twenty-two as ordinance seventy-one six hundred. But Board Bill one forty is actually issuing that TIF note directing the funds that have already been approved to go towards the build out of the lab space that C two N will occupy. The benefits of this go to the company, C two N, to help build out this space. And I'm again happy to answer any questions that you all have.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the ninth, you are recognized to close.
Okay, well, again, thank you all for your conversation and dialogue over these bills. Really excited about the opportunity this brings to St. Louis and really hope that we see lots of good headlines coming out of this space in years to come. So with that, I renew my motion.
Been moved by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by the Alderman from the fifth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one forty. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
No.
Alderman Orion?
No.
Alderman Varma? Alderwoman Valescas?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier?
No.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
No.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Varma? We have eleven I-votes and four no-votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the ninth, the third read and finally pass Board Bill one forty. Reported, the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill number one thirty-two, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven, as amended floor, Board Bill one thirty-nine, Board Bill number one forty.
All other business being suspended, the president shall an open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committee.
Resolution number one twenty-three, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer, President Green, Alderman Orion, Alderwoman Valescas, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Sanier, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Solidar- solidarity with Garter World Officers in St. Louis Lambert International Airport as they organize to for a union.
Alderwoman from the first, you're recognized on the first reading of resolution two twenty-three.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that remove resolution two twenty-three to the Transportation and Commerce Committee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we move resolution two twenty-three to the Transportation and Commerce Committee. Is there any discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth?
I'd like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we send Board Bill two twenty-three to the Transportation and Commerce Committee. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Second reading resolutions, committee reports and adoptions.
Report from the HUDs Committee, Mayor Appointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority, Ms. Rachel De Souza.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Commissioners of the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt Mayor Jones' appointment of Ms. De Souza, who has been amazing speaker this week at the HUDs Committee. It was, we were excited to have her come back since she couldn't make the first opportunity. We're always excited when they take the time to come to committee and speak with us to answer questions and speak to their willingness to serve. So again, I move that we adopt Mayor Jones' appointment of Ms. De Souza to the St. Louis Housing.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority. Is there any further discussion?
Roll call.
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg?
Aye.
Alderwa- Alderman Cone?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Varma?
Aye.
Alderwoman Valescas?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Browning?
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus? I vote no, because we don't have people in North St. Louis. Absolutely no. Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich?
Aye.
President Green?
Abstained.
Alderwoman Spencer? We have twelve I-votes, one no and one abstained.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to approve Mayor's appointment to the St. Louis Housing Authority. Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolutions Consent Calendar.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify, oh, Alderwoman from the seventh?
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to speak very briefly to a resolution that I have up and make sure that I just acknowledge and thank Elaine Coder. Elaine Coder is a resident of the Fox Park neighborhood for more than two decades. She served as president of the neighborhood organization. She's done a phenomenal job, cultivated a lot of first-time events, did a lot of community service. And so I'm just thankful and hopeful that we will pass this resolution and be able to give her a small token of gratitude and appreciation for her service to the Seventh War and to Fox Park Neighborhood specifically.
Need further discussion? Need further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item twenty-three announcements?
Monday, January thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Special Committee on Red Tape in the Kennedy Room at three P M. Monday, January the thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, Poet Laureate Task Force webinar at three P M. Tuesday, January the fourteenth, HUDs in the commit- Kennedy Room at eleven A M. Wednesday, January the fifteenth, we have HUDs in the Kennedy Room at five P M. Thursday, January twenty, January the sixteenth, Health and Human Development webinar at nine A M. Public Safety in the Kennedy Room at two P M. Friday, December the seventeenth, full board meeting in the chambers at ten A M.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the sixth?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to clarify, we will be having a, the Special Committee on Red Tape at, on Monday at three P M. We've moved it to webinar. There should be, we alerted the clerks, so just so you know, everybody who's on that committee, in case there's snow, you don't have to come in. So we're doing it via webinar.
Alderwoman from the first?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to announce a Public Infrastructure and Utilities Meeting Wednesday, January fifteenth at three thirty P M in the Kennedy Room. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the eleventh?
Good morning and Happy New Year to everyone. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for Sister Veronica Higgins, who recently passed away. Her funeral services are this evening at six P M. And that will be online. A mass of the, a, a, a mass of Christian burial will be tomorrow, January the eleventh, at nine A M. At the cath- at the cathedral, boy, my tongue today, the Cathedral of Our Lady of Perpetual Health. Sister Veronica Higgins is an African-American nun who was of the Carmelite Order, you know, and it's so rare within my lifetime, having been raised in Catholic education, to have people of my pigment to serve in this position and to have served a lifetime. And so for that, I would ask for a moment of silence and prayers for her and her family. Thank you.
Good. Please bow our heads for a moment of silence. Alderwoman from the first?
I apologize. I did not mean to have my hand raised. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteenth?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would also ask if we could take a moment of silence for former President Jimmy Carter, who was laid to rest. So I would just ask for a moment of silence. Thank you.
Good. Please bow our heads for a moment of silence. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Seeing none, Alderman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, and the Board of Aldermen change.
Second.
Been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, that we adjourn until January seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We are adjourned. Please stay safe out there. If you have to get out, drive safely. I know many of you have been out there doing a lot of shoveling to help your constituents out. So, it's appreciated, but please take it slow and hopefully we have some warmer temperatures next week and can dig out a little bit more. Have a great day and Happy New Year.